Without a shadow of a doubt, it's the crunkest show in social media history. It's gotta be that time again, so I'm gonna welcome you to the war zone. And I got my co-host Donovan Sadiq, Demetri Kay, and I am the five-star general. Say, man, you might want to get a seatbelt tonight. You know how we do, number steady going up every night. All I can tell you, you gonna figure out why we number one at what we do. Say, man, I wanna welcome you to the war zone to tell you top of the afternoon, remember? Always remember, we couldn't do any of this without any of y'all, so we really appreciate you guys tuning in. Our guest for tonight was supposed to be council member Michael Kubash. And Mr. Kubash has gotten caught in the rainstorm on I-10, so he won't make it tonight, we'll reschedule him. But Demetri has something else that she wants to do tonight. And I think y'all gonna enjoy it, so let's see what she got up her sleeve. What's up, Ms. Kay?
Well, hello to everybody. Uh, cancelled, hold on a second, that might be back, there we go. Says, says our guest cancelled and is gonna reschedule, I guess, at another time. Um, you know, sometimes life happens and you have to come up with something on the fly. Um, spur of the moment, so we thought, since everybody out there in Facebook land, if you will, have so much to say and so much on your mind, we are gonna open the floor and we're gonna take suggestions and questions and comments from the comment section. Um, and we are going to address it, whether you have a question to ask us, you need some advice, a subject you want us to cover. Now is your time to be heard, um, so let's hear what you got, and so until we see some, uh, comments coming up, um, we'll just kinda shoot it back and forth, uh, until we see some, some questions. We're gonna try this out, I guess, for the first time, and so what's on your mind, fellas?
I'm from Houston, and I see the mayor do a press conference today. And, um, you know, trying to get people to understand, we need to social distance, I think he's done a decent job since all of this has come up. And these negroes don't get it, man. I'm talking about, I mean, to the point, man, where, you know, I, I understand what the club owner dealing with, 25% capacity, they ain't gonna make them no money. So I think that they would realistically not mind paying the fine, if, if they end up with a fine, just so they could make all the money. But at the same time, I mean, it's, it's really being irresponsible. And, and before you know it, you know, you gonna have to have a mayor to come down heavy-handed. And then once he do that, then everybody gonna be upset, what he do is that he gonna end up shutting it down. So, you know, it's really, that in itself, you know, that's, that's really bugging me, because I mean, why it's always gotta be us?
Well, you know, when you're at the bottom of the economic scale, and that's one thing that this, uh, COVID-19 has exposed, which we already knew, um, you know, people are just gonna go out there and, and go get it, you know, the, the baby need diapers, you gotta go get it, you know? So, I, that's where I think I'm at, but out here in California, I mean, there's people droves toward the beaches and the lakes and things like that, and it's really sad, because, you know, um, again, we're not gonna get over this pandemic any sooner, if people just keep doing what they're doing, and I mean, there is no way you can tell me you're sitting at the beach with your children, who, you know, we know it's hard for them just to keep still, so, uh, good luck with that, so. And I think, as a matter of fact, when Demetri and I were on a, a show earlier, we just went over 100,000, uh, deaths in the United States, uh, due to, to the COVID, so.
Um, well, in regards to, you know, different states opening up and things like that, um, I was having this conversation with my daughter earlier. Uh, you, like you said, she drove the beach, people on the beaches and in the pool and all that other stuff, and I'm like, why are people having such a hard time just staying home, you know? Yeah, yeah, just gotta be out there doing something. You know, now is the time where we should, you know, uh, we, we talk about this a lot, but we reflect, you know, sit and get, you know, to know one another again, because we have, uh, over the last couple of years, lived in the same household with peoples we really don't even know. We don't even talk to, but yet we're dying, literally, dying to get back out in the streets and, you know, go spend a bunch of money that we really don't have to spend right now, and I don't know if you guys saw, oh gosh, I think it was in Michigan or somewhere like that, where a salon opener, a salon owner, rather, over a week's time of being open, infected 91 people. And so for people are trying to get out there and get the hair did, and, you know, have a good time and stuff, think about those things, you don't know who that person who was making money, and I'm sure they need to make money, you don't know who they're coming in contact with. I'm sure after a while, I mean, they get complacent, I figure 91 people got affected, so how many other more people did they see? Did they clean all of their equipment and everything like they were supposed to? Obviously not. Somehow, somebody came in there and infected 91 people, and so I, I don't know why it doesn't register to people that this is very real, um, and I'm to the point where if I see family members going all over the place, they can't, uh, don't come around me until we know this is really over, 'cause I'm trying to do my best not to get the mess.
Well, Errol Jones has a question, I'm gonna put it up. Is the entire community being disrespected by the only, uh, black president, I guess, being denied evidence portrait in the White House? Nah, I don't think he's being disrespected, especially if you ain't got a problem with what the hell Joe said. Next question.
Um, I would, I would. Out of all the things, yes, so to answer the question off the rip, yes, it is disrespectful. You're dealing with a person, Trump, who is disrespectful, but the real question is, you know, what we gonna do about it? And I also think we have bigger fish to fry than a portrait of Obama not being held in the White House, and I think also, Obama didn't really rally for black people like that, are we really going to be upset behind the picture?
Now, what we, what we have, what we have to remember is, we can't have selective amnesia when it comes to racism. You feel what I'm saying? What Joe said was racist. Okay, a day after, you know, the day before that, you got the issue with the picture. But the only thing you can see is the picture, you ain't got a problem with what Joe said. So selective racism doesn't work for me.
Absolutely, absolutely. You know, and, and especially, you know, with what, what we're dealing with now, 300, uh, what, 38 million Americans are out of work, and we're worried about pictures, we're worried about going to the club, getting our hair and nails done, but, and we're running to the club, but yet we don't have money for rent, we don't have money for our car notes, we don't know, you know, what's gonna happen down the line. And we're worried about a picture of a, uh, club that we are never, ever gonna be a part of. So I just think it's just getting kinda crazy, but Al Jackson says, "What do you think about the Last Dance documentary in regards to black people?" Um, I didn't see the documentary, and I didn't wanna see it, because I, I was never a Michael Jordan fan, so, um, I do feel that, um, Michael Jordan's, uh, you know, he is one of the greatest, say he's the GOAT. I don't know what statistics people are using, 'cause I use statistics by the numbers. Michael Jacks, uh, not Michael Jackson, Michael Jordan is number six on the, uh, all-time scoring list. Kareem is in the top 10, and matter of fact, the top five in all, so that would, to me, by, by stat, would make him the GOAT. But my problem with, uh, Michael Jordan, it's not Michael Jordan per se, but it's the Nike company itself. A lot of people spend a lot of money on Air Jordan stuff, predominantly us, and we're, and that's a lot of money over the years. And, uh, Michael Jordan, he doesn't really say anything progressively in regards to what's going on in the black community. I never saw the documentary, I don't wanna see it, because Michael Jordan's silence in people getting shot down in the street and what's going on in all these major cities tells me a lot.
Well, I, I say this here especially about the GOAT debate. You know, I love Mike, I was, I was really into basketball when Mike played, so when he switched hands that night, I was watching that game. But as far as being the GOAT, when, when he gets the number of rings that Bill Russell has, then we could talk about him being the GOAT. You know, the only thing stopped Bill Russell from getting more rings is just got old. So, you know, uh, as far as did it, did, did, how did it affect the black community? I think it, to me, you, you saw a guy, I, one, I didn't have an issue with none Mike, with none Mike did in the document. The way he pushed them players with all that, I didn't have no problem with it, because when you wanna be a champion, you gonna go to the extreme. You're gonna go to the extreme, did, did I have a problem with him keeping Isaiah off the Dream Team? No, didn't have a problem with it, when you got that kinda stroke, you already know, if you ain't in good favor with some of them people, that will go out. So, I, I don't think it affected the black community at all, I mean, for years, I felt the same way that Donovan is feeling about his philanthropy as far as it comes to, you know, the African-American community. You know, not doing, you know, things that he could have done, and, and I will say, in the last few years, he's ramped that up. He, he's definitely ramped that up, but for many years, he didn't do anything. So, you know, that's, that's my take on the Last Dance.
Um, I like the Last Dance, that Donna Summer song, oh my God, that was classic. Uh, so, uh, Jamian, he says, "Who do I contact about, uh, starting community, a community project only for the black schools and hoods?"
Well, Jamian is from Houston, and I wanna make Jamian aware some, there's no such thing as an all-black school in Houston anymore. You're gonna have to figure that out, there is no all-black school in Houston. So if you're not gonna, and I'm gonna be honest with you, I love you, Jamian, but when it comes to kids at school, if you're not including all the kids, I'm not rocking it. That's just how I feel, kids are kids, I don't even see a color when I deal with kids.
Well, I'm gonna be on the total opposite side of that and say that we do need black schools for black children, so black children can learn about their black selves. We need that, 'cause we used to have that, and so I think to say, 'cause I always tell you guys, and I'm not ever gonna change, I'm not an all-lives-matter type of gal. I'm black first, I'm, I'm black and I'm proud, and, and all of that, and I'm, I'm gonna be rooting for black people first, and we need our own schools. We've been in white schools and other people's schools long enough, and it is time that we start something for our own children. No shade, that doesn't shade everybody else, it just says that it's time for us to learn about black people in a black setting. And, you know, uh, we know as black students, we are more than likely to thrive better under black teachers. Um, we know that especially black boys with white female teachers don't do so well. Because those white female teachers are always gonna look at that black boy, no matter how old he is, as a threat, as a problem. And I, I've given this example before, my younger brother has a, a, a young boy, I'm in school, and the principal would call him all the time. "Oh, your son is doing this, and your son is doing that, and your son is doing this, and your son is doing that." And my brother finally told her, he says, "You know what, you are gonna have to force me to have a talk with my son sooner than I need to, because I know for a fact he's not doing anything that everybody else is not doing, and mind you, he wasn't doing anything over the top, just, you know, boys being boys." And she says, he says, "But I know you don't call those, his little white friends, parents, all the time like you call me, so you're gonna force me to have a talk with my son and let him know who he's dealing with and why you are on his bumper." And he said, "Those phone calls stop cold in their tracks." She never called him again, because she called him on it. The point that I'm making is, she's a white principal, trying to govern a little black boy out of the misconceptions that she's been taught about black men and black boys, and they get the black boys early, and Gary, you should know this, the, uh, school-to-prison pipeline. And so we need our own schools, so they can be in a system that looks like them, that is for them, and that teaches them more about themselves, because honestly, we should, as parents, should be teaching our kids about themselves. But when they go to a school, I'm tired of teaching, by hearing the kids, you know, talking about Abraham Lincoln, Abraham Lincoln freed the slaves. Well, yeah, sorta, kinda, but we know it wasn't 'cause he loved our black asses, okay? So we need them to do in a school that's representative of them.
Well, what we want and what we gonna get is two different things.
Mm-hmm.
You're not getting all-black school, not gonna happen. And I'm, I'm gonna tell you why, because if you give us what we need and we have an all-black school, we're gonna, we're gonna pass up everybody else. Our kids are actually very, very intelligent, and they don't want that, that's the reason that they stripped these schools of the programs that worked. Now, the thing is, another reason that you're not gonna get an all-black school, because these black-ass parents won't show up at the school board meetings and complain and try to get what the kids need. That's just the bottom line, I'm in there many nights, the same four or five black people, and if there's a white issue, it's three, four hundred of them. They move mountains, and I'm not mad at them, but when you don't wanna participate in the process, you can't get it done. So my thing is, what you're saying is true, I can only speak on the city of Houston, because that's where I'm from, but that will never happen where we are. Remember, I graduated from an institution 94 years old, all-black, but it ain't no more. And they took everything from us, took the quality teachers, took the programs. We've had to fight tooth and nail just to keep the doors open. Okay, but when it's time to really fight, show up at the school board meetings, we can't get no participation. And it's like that in almost everything that we deal with. Now, Errol is, 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 is talking about this picture of Obama. And we need to highlight the fact that Trump is disrespecting the black community. I don't give a damn if he don't put Obama picture. Obama disrespected the black community, when he didn't do nothing for us. That's how I feel, I ain't got too much to say about it. When you hold all the cards, when you the man in charge, you get to do what you wanna do. So if that picture is a problem, why the Congressional Black Caucus ain't raising no hell about it?
Absolutely, absolutely. Uh, Rob, oh, man, keep jumping, uh, Robbie Seals says, "With regard to our community as human beings, we have to get more civil savvy. One family at a time, most homes have a Bible, but we need a civic, a civil code book and start teaching our young people about the civil process, so that they can be responsible for, for our behavior, good or bad, outside of our homes. Most families do not know who their watch commander is, who is your local official, and what is the responsibility to the consumer in the community."
Now, what I need you to do is I need you to break that down for the little bit older people that don't understand all them big words. I'm not calling y'all dumb, but honestly, some people, they not gonna grab all that. Go ahead, Donovan.
Wait a minute, I, I'm one of those people that can't understand all them words.
Well, the civil process, are we talking about government? Because in the school system, our kids don't learn anything about it. They, see, the problem with us is, anything that deals with our history, they make sure that we can't learn it. They make sure that we, we can't figure it out. You know, they really want you to believe Abe Lincoln did us a favor freeing the slaves. Tell us why he did it? That's the question I was asking when I was getting kicked out of history class. I mean, the man getting all this free label, why all of a sudden he just wake up one morning and say, "Y'all's free"? That don't make sense to me, so what else happened? You see what I'm saying? So, I, I think that we, we have to, um, we, we have to do a better job of just being educated across the board, and some days, you gonna have to, like you said the other day, Demetri, our moms used to tell us, "You gonna have to pick up some books, man." Anything that we talking about learning, we gonna have to pick up the books and teach ourselves.
And that's really where I was going with the whole black school thing, I mean, there are some black schools, uh, but we, we need to get back to educating our own, you know? Uh, again, I cannot stress that enough, everybody else, when I say everybody else, white kids, Asian kids, Hispanic kids, you name it, they got enough people capable for them. We need the cape for our own, when we are able to do, do for our own and get our own foundation going, then we can, you know, that's what Marcus Garvey said. He says, "Until we get and have what the white man has, we have no business trying to help them." We gotta help ourselves first, first law of nature, self-preservation. We need to help ourselves, we need to teach ourselves, like we used to do.
Right, you know, uh, but you know, back to, uh, Mrs. C, uh, Robbie Seals's, uh, statement. I really feel that it starts in the home, everything I know about politics, I learned at home. When my mom would go vote, or, you know, there's something going on, yeah, she would come back and her girlfriends or my aunts, and they would be talking and stuff, and they would tell me, "This is Judge so-and-so, you know Mr. Thomas over there, the old Confederate." Everything I learned, I, I learned, you know, at home, you know, because it was that important that I knew it. It really is important that I know, uh, you know, what law is and the civil law, there's so many civil laws out there, it'll just, it'll blow your mind. The only law that I really needed to know was right and wrong. What was right and what was wrong, and that pretty much kept me out of the jurisdiction of, you know, the American court system.
Jeffrey McFarland, "We may just gotta leave the US and go back to the motherland, it's so corrupt here." Then what the hell is y'all waiting on? All that talking about we gonna go back, y'all need an Uber boat? Y'all ain't going to damn with me. Y'all ain't going to with me. I know it's frustrating, I know it's corrupt, I know it's all of that. But we ain't go over there and think you finna do what you wanna do. Think you gonna shake your ass every Sunday over there? You gonna have some problems, so I, I, I think the best thing, man, is just be here. Hold these people accountable, you know what I don't get, and I'm being honest, man, everybody applauds me. "Man, you, you do such a good job, then why the hell I'm doing it by myself? If I can move mountains, why, why don't you come join me in the fight? We can get everything accomplished. If we fight, if we hold our money, we win the game. Do you know how you can shut this whole country down if we just say we ain't spending no money for a week? If we don't spend no money for a week? Man, the people gonna come up with some reparations, man. 'Cause if they can't make no money off you, 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 you don't hold any importance to them. You know, and everybody's so focused on Trump, I think me and Demetri had this conversation. I, and I'm gonna ask them, can I ask them, Demetri? How can you make Trump powerless? If we wanna hold our vote from Biden, and everybody saying, "You gonna leave Trump in there", I already understand that you don't understand the election process, you don't, you don't even know. So how do you make Trump powerless if you hold your vote from Joe Biden? And this the year to do it. But even your Democrats ain't saying nothing. Let me tell you how you do it. Honestly, in my world, I don't give a damn if Trump wins. As long as we take the Senate and the House. If you take the Senate and the House, Trump is effectively the same, he in the same position that Obama was in. So now you got a Democrat that would take Mitch McConnell's place and block everything Trump doing. You didn't have to sell out to Biden, you don't care who won, but you control the Senate and the House. Am I right or wrong, Donovan?
Absolutely, the, uh, legislation, uh, process is all done in the House, at the House and the Senate. And if you control that, which is a third of the government, hey, it, it's a wrap, it's a wrap, nothing gets, I mean, a president can propose a law, but he can't do anything, that's all, this is a proposal. So, yeah, the key is the, the House, uh, the Congress, the key is the Congress, period.
And I think the key question is, is why aren't the Democrats saying anything? Because they need you to stay po and broke. They need you to stay in your place, so they can continue making money off you. That's what I feel, Demetri?
I mean, yeah, I agree with all of that, but I wanna address the question by Jeffrey, where, uh, they say, uh, we must, we, I mean, we just gotta leave the US and go back to the motherland, it's too corrupt here. And I agree, Donovan and I were in the motherland a couple months back, uh, late last year. Um, and that's what Marcus Garvey was actually trying to get us to do almost 100 years ago, for everybody, um, to go back to Africa. It was no good for us in here back then, and 100 years later, it's even worse, and so a lot of people struggle with going back to Africa, because Donovan says, "What, you want me to leave this good white man? All, all, you know, all these things this good white man got to offer, I can't see myself partying with that." But I think it's, uh, going to Africa is, um, or the concept of going back to Africa is always something you'll be able to envision once you just go. Just go, you know, for vacation or trip, go, and you, it'll blow your mind, like, wait a minute. Why am I in the United States opposed to being over here, where you're predominantly around black people? There is black businesses, and, you know, you just, you, you, like, you feel wanted. Like, I can't even go to the fore without feeling like maybe today is the day, you know? Somebody gonna do or say something, I'm gonna have to call Donovan, my rich friend, to bail me out, you know, I mean, it's, it's, it's a whole different planet over there, at, at, at Africa. But if we wait too long, we're not gonna be able to go, because everybody else except for us are taking advantage of what Africa has to offer. You guys are seeing the Chinese are planting roots there, they're scrapping up and scraping up land and all kinda things as we, while we're contemplating whether we can go or not.
Uh, how many people are aware that the longest world war is still going on is in the Congo? Con, they are constantly fighting there for the minerals and everything that is going on within the Congo. And that's been going on since the Belgians controlled it, and before that, King Leopold before that, I mean, it, it's amazing.
Say, man, you, you getting, you getting too deep, man, remember, a lot of people ain't took no history in school, man.
Right, right, okay, so, uh, I, I'll just say this, when, when we went to South Africa, just the feeling of, there's no stress there, you're just like, ah, it's just, it's just a breath of fresh air. Now, I know a lot of you guys, you know, take cruises and, you know, people down in Houston and Florida, y'all love going on those Caribbean cruises. It's not the same thing, it's not the same thing, go to Africa and see what they're doing over there, and you're gonna find that the corrupted officials over there are doing the same thing our black officials are doing here. But the difference is, they control the country, they're doing a little things for, for, you know, their people, but as a whole, I mean, it's, it just makes you feel a lot better and you, and you less stressed, and then your dollar goes a lot farther. So, uh, Demetri and I have a go-bag, we call it a go-bag, 'cause we're ready to go. Boom, we're outta here.
Al Jackson say, "Why is it when you say you're not a Christian, black people automatically assume they're true atheists?" I don't read, I don't read the slave manual, so I don't know nothing about that Bible. I know what's in it, but I don't follow the beliefs in it no more. I don't get caught up in the Jesus aspect and, 'cause I'm, I'm trying to still find the scripture in the Bible where it says, "Thou black people shall get your ass kicked 463 years." And, and it's still cool, I'm, I'm just, I don't, I don't knock it, that's your belief, you do what you do, if you feel I'm an atheist, that's your business, I'm not. But I know I'm not finna get a church $12,000 a month no more, and then when I get sick and go in the hospital, you don't even come visit me, no.
Well, the benevolent, I'd like to help you out, I'd like to help you out, Jerry, but the benevolent funds a little low right now.
Um, I will say this, I, it's because a lot of those people, said black people who accuse you of being, 'cause I've been accused of being an atheist before, and the minute somebody's trying to invite me to their church, "Oh, girl, what church you go to? Why I don't go to church?" "What, you don't believe in God?" Then I say, "Well, where did I say I didn't believe in God? God is not about religion, God says, 'Worship me.'" Don't get ascribed to a religion that actually causes division, but those people think that you're an atheist, because they only believe that Christianity. They believe that all black people should be Christians, right? Which is why you have a lot of Christians who war against Muslims and vice versa, but, you know, they apparently don't read the Bible, God says, "Have a relationship with me, not with some man-made religion." And my relationship with God is my relationship, I don't have to announce that to you, what I'm doing and what I'm worshiping. But they accuse you of being atheist, because they are ignorant, and they don't even open up the Bible. You, you listen to most Christians talk, and no shade to Christians, I'm not trying to be disrespectful, but if you listen to most Christians talk, they got a couple of verses they can say well. But they negate the whole, the rest of the, the entire Bible, they only use, use their narrative to try to castigate you and make you feel like a bad person, 'cause you do not apply to the religion of Christianity. And it's because they are ignorant of the very religion they claim. And it's because they are ignorant of the very religion they claim they serve, that is why they accuse you of being atheist. An atheist going to church, cause there's a lot of people who are Christians who act like heathens. They, they, I mean, they're the closest thing to it, to this. Somebody who was going to God would say being lukewarm, you going up in there to church, and then you going to the club, and you doing things that are, you know, not focused on God, so those people are just as much, because they not following the word of God either.
Well, I got a relationship with God, I don't need to have one with a crooked pastor. I don't, and, and that's just the way that I feel, I mean, you got everything going on in church, except church. You're sleeping with kids, you got casinos in the back room, it's, it's a bunch of freaking going on, everybody's sleeping with everybody. You want some ass, go to church. That's all it boiled down to, if you want some ass, go to church, and you can get some. Now call me what you want.
Right, Kepis says, uh, Kepis Thomas says, I have traveled to Ghana last year, the first time in my, uh, life, I felt like I was not a minority. I felt safe, I mean, exactly, I mean, you know, you, you know, isn't that a weird feeling, when, when you go to a country and everything is controlled by people who look like you? The only problem with the, with Africa that I had, even though they gave me a name, Manolo, Manolo, how do you say that, Manolo? Um, which is Zulu, by the way, uh, is the fact that we're a lost tribe, so we don't know exactly what tribe we are from, but while we were there, make a long story short, Demetri ran into a, a lady who went by the name of Mama Zulu. And she had the essence and the spirit of Demetri's mom. But I mean, it's just such a great feeling, and I wish more of us would go to Africa, I almost guarantee you, that would start an annual, uh, not pilgrimage to leave, but an annual trip to go and take our people, you know, back there and see what's going on there.
They probably could go on the annual trip to Africa, if they quit going on the annual trip to, to the casino. You, we could do anything we wanna do. We ain't gonna spend no, many people's not finna spend no money, go no Africa, man. Like in Houston, on business net, you got a lot of, you know, Jamaican and African businesses on the street called business. That's the closest they gonna get to Africa. That's it. I'm finna tell you the truth, I'm here, I'm speaking on my city, my people. If they could stop taking the annual trip to the club, to the after hours, or to the casino, they probably could go to Africa. Now I know how to make some of them.
Um, Errol, uh, he say, I'm a college-trained minister, but Christians wear me out with the limited knowledge and poor uh, representation of what the Bible teaches, I choose not to open a church, my ministry is in the streets. And that's exactly right, the, the work of the church is actually outside of the walls, people feel like I need to go inside the church, which is why there's this heated debate, uh, that Trump says that he's gonna force the states to let the churches open, because people need to go and worship and blah, 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 blah. But there's actually a lot of pastors who are taking exception to that and saying, well, we could FaceTime, we could call people and pray, we don't actually need to be in the church. We are aware that obedience is better than sacrifice, and so, we don't want to be out of compliance, because we're not exempt from the COVID, God says to use wisdom. Don't force me to give you a miracle, you're supposed to obey the law of the land, of the laws of Caesar, and all of that, right? But to your point, people don't crack open the Bible at all, they just, like I said, most Christians got five to ten scriptures they know well. And it's the ones they, they usually try to judge everybody else with, but to, to your point, the work is not in the church physically, it's outside of the church.
Well, it's a lot of reasons I don't go no more. I got tired of the big hat game. Them old ladies that think they run everything in the church? I got sick of them. Like when Kirby John got caught up, oh, Kirby John is a man of God, and he wouldn't do the things the feds said he did. I say the feds don't make blank trips, and Kirby John going to jail. The big hat, I'm talking about the big hat gang for real, I really thought they had put a hit out on me. I thought them old ladies, seventy, eighty years old, had put a hit out on me, cause I was just telling the truth about this man. But it's so messy in the church nowadays, it's so much mess in the church. Man, I don't wanna be nowhere around it. Nowhere around it, y'all can keep that.
Anybody wanna take something else?
Yeah, no, I'm gonna take this one, uh, Dexter Evans says, basically, we did not come to America on our own, obviously. We, we built America after the fact. Problem was that there was no exit plan for blacks, no boats to go home, no money to go home. Well, um, I agree with you, but, uh, after the civil war, or actually during the civil war, uh, the Congress and the Republicans were trying to figure out what to do, because Abraham Lincoln himself said that there is no black person is not equal to a white man, and that's where the country of Liberia comes into fruition. And the whole plan was to pack us up and ask us voluntarily to go back. And the ones that couldn't do it, we were gonna send you back by force, and that's why you have the country of Liberia, so there was a plan.
Well, man, we don't need a plan now. If you wanna go, get your passport and go. Stop faking like that, what you wanted to, don't come sit up on this program and act like you black as a berry. Like you dying with your people. Stop making them excuses and get gone. What you waiting on? You only live once. You know, but some of y'all, I'm gonna tell you, make sure you got a round trip ticket. Cause if you go there and you get to, you're to mess off all your change, you gonna be living there. And that's what it is, man.
I mean, I definitely think everybody should try to apply, uh, I've got some feedback, uh, for a passport, I think they're, they're, they're on hold now, I don't think you can apply right now due to all the things that are going on. But I think if you get a passport, you never know, we ain't gonna need to get up out of here. Yeah, I mean, you just never know, you might only have an opportunity to take your passport and, and your wallet. I mean, cause we don't know, but, uh, speaking of Liberia, yeah, that's what, um, Marcus Garvey was trying to just to all go back. And in, in the early nineteen hundreds, he had over, well, the numbers say three to six million, um, Africans all over the diaspora, ready to go. And so he did that with no social media, no telephones, no tele, uh, TV, none of that, let people ready to go back, and now we can't get three people together. Now, well, I, I shouldn't actually say that, because there's actually a lot of, um, African-Americans that have gone back to Africa, depending on wherever part they want to go, and just gave it up all here, and they're now at peace. They are now happy living over there.
Dexter said, fact is easy to take a person from home, but harder to return them to home. The man has not build the wall yet, Dexter, you can go. What you waiting on? Man, you can get a yellow cab, you get an Uber, you get something. Man, you, you, you're not getting a return trip, they not giving us a return trip. So I'm, I'm, it sound like I'm joking, but man, if you wanna go, go. And if anybody here listening.
I, I understand what it's saying, you know, I think I understand what it's saying. Because especially with the black people now in America, we've been taken from the motherland, we've been so conditioned and brainwashed into thinking that, you know, the white man, um, has our best gift at heart, and we've also been conditioned to think, cause you hear a lot of black people saying, oh, Africans don't like African-Americans, that's bull cocker. When we were in Africa, I didn't have one adverse, um, interaction with anybody over there, in fact, they love black people. They're like, why y'all not coming back? You know, we, we want you to come back, and so, yeah, there are some examples where, you know, there's been some issues, but overall, that's, that's a lie, and so.
Uh, Demetri, to, to tell them my story when I was over there.
Which one? Yeah, Donovan did not wanna come back, he was like, I'm gonna try to get arrested or something, so I can stay over here, you know? But, so I agree with him, so mentally, what you've been brainwashed was hard for you, I mean, we are so far removed from our ancestors who were originally brought over here, we honestly think that this is home, because this is all we know is brutality, you know, injustice, and things not being equal, that's all we're used to, we're used to struggling, so we can't imagine going to a land that is actually gonna welcome us with open arms, and, you know, we, we're actually have, have peace.
Let's see if we can touch the subject of domestic violence. It might be a, a storm. Not necessarily domestic violence, but violence from men against women. Is it ever acceptable? Donovan?
Well, obviously, violence against women is, uh, or anybody is never acceptable. But remember, a couple, I think it was last week, I said that I was gonna answer the question of if and when there does come a time, a man needs to put his hands on a woman. And I'm gonna tell you, and a lot of people might, might disagree with this, but there does come a time where a man has to put his hands on a woman. Demetri's heard this before, and, 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 you know, y'all get ready, buckle up. She beat your mama up, she burned your house down, and she kicks your dog. Tell me I'm lying.
You might not be lying. I think, I think that, uh, you don't have to do it. You don't have to do it, but the only time I've seen where I couldn't be mad at it is when a lady that was gay forgot that she was a lady. No matter how she was dressed, to me, you were a woman. And she put her hands on that man, and he knocked a grill out. I ain't have no problem with it, you shouldn't have put your hands on him, I don't think you should put your hands on a woman, and at the end of the day, you shouldn't put your hands on a man. That, that's how I feel about it, Ms. Demetri, I see you rubbing your face.
I mean, cause I think there's di- different levels to that question. Now, for, I think for everybody is different, now, if I wanna go with the standard social answer, that, that answer is you should never put your hands on a woman, that's what society would tell you, under no circumstances should you put your hands on a woman. But I don't have sons, but I have nephews, and I say by all means, you defend yourself, because we have seen plenty of times, we've seen it, you know? We've seen plenty of times where there are girls and women who are just giving dudes the business, slapping them, punching them, stalking them. And at some point, I'm, I'm, I'm gonna return what you giving me now, and we've seen that in a lot of instances, where men have tried all they could, you know, to, to stop them, so, I, I, I kind of, and Whoopi said this, she says, you know, don't put your hands on a man if you don't want him to put his hands back on you, I think that's, you know, pretty, uh, good advice, but again, we live in a society that doesn't see it that way, they say under no circumstances should you put your hands on a woman, but I'm kinda on.
Well, under no circumstances should she put her hands on him.
Well, no, I agree with that, and I'm on the side of that, where you shouldn't put your hands on him as well, I mean, you can, and this is what people don't understand. You can only control what you do, you can't control how people receive what you do to them. Some men might walk away and say, you know what, I'm not gonna do nothing to you, I'm bigger and stronger than you, I'm gonna walk away. But then there are those men of like, okay, sister, he-man, or whatever you wanna call yourself, I'm gonna return what you giving me. So you don't get to control how a person receives what you do to them, so.
I, I'm just, I'm one of them guys, if it gets to that point, I don't need to be around you. I just don't even need to be around you, if it get to that point, and if that's what it is, then I'm moving around. But when I'm trying to move around, don't put your fucking hand on. Because my gonna turn bisexual real quick. Don't put your hands on me. I mean what I say, and I say what I mean, because some people don't get that. A man should never put his hands on a woman, and I feel that's true, but I also believe that you should never put your hands on a man. If you don't want him to bust you in your mouth, don't put your hands on. And, and that's what it is.
Uh, Errol, you wanna know where I'm from, I'm from California, um, my parents are from, uh, the south, but I am born and raised predominantly, uh, Southern California, as a matter of fact, uh, but yeah, I, I, I agree with you, I think, um, I, I think the real issue is people are not teaching their kids not to put your hands on people, just keep your hands to yourself. You know, and I, and, and I'm not caping for the women, cause I know there's a lot of women out there who think they can whip a man, and I just, there's some case, just rare cases, you can whip a man, right? But most apart, most, most of the time, you're not gonna whip no man, ain't no person jumping in a man's place. You know, because when he put some hands on you, you wanna be a woman, then you wanna come out, oh, I'm a lady, how could you, you wasn't that, there's a difference between a woman and a lady. Right? Woman drives gender, but ladies drives, I, I would believe, behavior, ladies aren't gonna be jumping in no man's, under any circumstances. You can't.
Nah, we, 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 we're nonpartisan. We're nonpartisan as it is, so that means ain't nothing off limits to us, so I'm gonna say this here, I don't know if y'all gonna even touch it. Gay people sometimes have a tendency to put their hands on people. And then as soon as, like, this, 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 this gay woman will jump up in your face, I've had it done to me, and I walked off though. Jump in my face, and I'm gonna do this, and I'm gonna do that, but as soon as I would've hit your ass, you'd turn into the most feminine thing on the face of earth. You'd have been calling the police, oh, he hit a woman, well, I thought you was a man a few minutes ago. You see what I'm saying? I wanna talk about that, because even in the gay community, stay in your lane, man. Some of y'all get loose, man. Some of y'all get loose, and you think somebody gonna keep letting you make it, because you're gay, no. I'm not, oh, well, you know, he, he weaker than you, I don't give a, I'm telling you, don't cross that line, man. So y'all tell me, I mean, you seen it happen before, we, I've seen it happen on social media and the videos a thousand times. She, 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 she got the dickies on, and she sagging, and she, she throwing up, and, you know, and all of a sudden, you run up on the wrong dude, and he beat the hell out you, then you wanna call the police.
Yep, you know.
Why is it all you gangsters, you gangster, but as soon as somebody put their foot in your behind, you wanna call the police?
You know, you know, and, 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 and that brings up a good question, cause on Demetri's page, she has a quote from, um, Malcolm X that says, respect everyone, be courteous, but if someone puts their hands on you, send them to the cemetery. Now, Demetri, does that apply also to, uh, women, as well as men and vice versa?
This is where y'all probably gonna disagree with me, cause I think while a lot of women are just wild, some of them, not a lot of women, the women that we see, right, I don't, not a lot of women, the women that we see on these social media things behave like wild animals. And I think it's gonna take for men to understand, you have the upper hand, right? And you could do a lot of damage to her now. If nothing else works, you trying to, you know, restrain her, and restrain her with your words, and she, then, ah, listen, self-defense, the law doesn't say you as a man can't defend yourself, you could do a lot of things in the name of self-defense. Now, if you are not able to reason with her, that's not your problem anymore, you're gonna do all you can do to protect yourself, but I, like I said, I don't have any sons, but I've always told them, protect yourself by any means necessary. You with a woman who feels like she needs to be beating your ass and stuff, first of all, to Gary's point, you shouldn't be with her. Let that be the first and the last time she put her hands on you. But at the end of the day, I think everybody has a right to protect themselves. Like, you know, like for me, it's, I don't have one of those, I'm in the gray area a lot, I don't have like a black and white answer, but I would also say this, as a man, y'all can't win. You can't win, because if the word gets out, you didn't beat a woman up, but you know what, Chris Brown is a perfect example. I don't know if you guys saw his documentary, where he finally explained what happened between him and Rihanna? He, he told the story that she actually was the aggressor, and she was the aggressor a lot. And that was the day that he had had enough, mind you, she threw his keys out the car, and she scratched the mess out of him, and she was punching and kicking him, and this has all been verified. But he said, I never talked about it, because at the end of the day, society was never going to give me a pass, they were always gonna charge me being the man for putting my hands on a woman, even though he was justified in doing that, society was never going to see it that way, especially. Society was never going to see it that way, especially a black man doing that to someone who was beloved. Now, the other side of that is Rihanna, I think she kinda owned it a little bit, but she could've came out and said, well, you know, that was my fault. Now, some people say, but he beat her black and blue. Again, you can't control how a person receives what you're doing to them.
I'm I'm gonna tell you a secret. It even had to go there with Chris and Rihanna. I need all my women to listen to me real quick. All it took was one punch. I'd have hit her square in her chest. I'd have hit her in her breasts. One punch, and she'd have shut it down right there. Now, y'all tell me if I'm wrong. I ain't have to hit her in her face, but I ain't finna sit there and get scratched up. See, cuz when we get to that point, I don't give a about going to jail. Now, I ain't gonna just sit here and let you do this to me. And I didn't know the whole, I knew it was more than what they were saying with Chris, so that's why I never persecuted Chris. You see what I'm saying? It is what it is.
Trisha Kay says, some women will jump in a man's face hoping he doesn't hit her back. Then they're they're shocked when he does. Exactly. You know, it's 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 kinda like, you know, they they just figure because they're they're feminine, oh, he would never do this to me. You don't know what that guy's gonna do. It might be just that he's done that. And just, and he just snaps, you know, and you know, I've seen it happen, you know, in the military a lot. Uh unfortunately, because these guys are doing their deployments, and you know, the wife is cheating or whatever, and you know, it's just, it's I mean, you're in a catch twenty-two. Like I said, you 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 just really can't underestimate anybody, you know, so.
I I think we've, now y'all remember the story about the lady that beat the hell out of the woman in the bathroom for trying to take her kids? Now, the district attorney has filed charges on the parent. They trying to rev, cuz she was on probation, trying to revoke her probation. And now this young lady may be facing two to twenty years. Y'all talk to me cuz that's a situation sorta like the woman hitting you. There's a situation that happened real fast. And sometimes you just gotta do what you gotta do. And in that situation, I don't have a problem with how she handled. Because what if she didn't handle it like that? What if she'd have sent that baby in that bathroom by herself? You probably would never see your child again. So whoever the judge is in Harris County that takes that case, you gonna have a problem out of me.
Um, I would just ask everybody out there, you know, if they are trying to uh press charges against her and give her the two to twenty years, I would ask you guys to stand up on her behalf. She did what she was supposed to do, and just to guy, give you guys a little refresher, you guys probably saw the video uh trending around of the mother who was in the bathroom with her her young child, and a lady comes in there uh telling the child to come to me, come to me. And the lady wouldn't let up, and so the mother finally had to get her uh back the lady off of her. The part that you don't see in the video is the lady actually kicked the door in when uh she uh she was um helping her child go to the restroom. So the lady was pretty pretty aggressive, and Yaya is the mother's name. She was doing what was necessary to protect her child, and so uh as uh Gary said, she's looking at doing some time. But the other side of that is a Malia Davis, whose mother didn't protect her. And knew that the father, or that that the boyfriend rather, the boyfriend, excuse me, the the boyfriend was abusive to her and uh ultimately was gonna kill her one day. She did nothing to protect her child, and she's roaming free. But yet this mother, on the other hand, did all that she was supposed to to protect her child, and now she's looking at being separated from her child. It's like, when when are the people who are doing the right thing gonna finally win? And I would like to know who her probation officer is, because I think they should have their feet held to the fire. Like, you don't have anything else to do. This lady was clearly within the right, protecting her child. And you 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 wanna try to sentence her or have her sentenced upwards of twenty years? What kinda, what, what, like, who is this person? I think we need to start there. Who is this probation officer that thinks that's the right thing to do to waste the taxpayers' money and to scare the living daylights out of this mother who was doing what she was supposed to be doing? Who is her probation officer? Cuz I think their names should be brought up and saying, hey, guys, this person thinks it's acceptable to waste your money on trying to put, throw the book at a woman who was doing what she's supposed to be doing while Malia Davis's mother is roaming free.
We seen the, don't not have a problem, especially the judicial system, protecting the criminals. We don't have a problem could protecting the criminals. That's, that's why I'm gonna tell you something, man. When them folk run up on me, and if you don't calm down, we're gonna take you to jail. Well, I tell you what, Billy Bob, hurry up and get me down there before they start feeding people, cuz I ain't scared to go. I ain't scared to go. You see, and they won't take me. But I ain't scared to go. Some days, you gonna have to walk through hell for your child. And if that's what it has to be, then that's what it has to be. Y'all don't have to worry about me cuz I'm a boot up in a few, and and I'm I'm gonna go fight the battle. I'm I'm gonna get iron for mine. I mean, if I gotta call a protest in front of the probation office. Now, I love them type. I love to just be disruptive to your work environment. Maybe I oughta do one in front of your house at two in the morning. But either way, it ain't gonna be no resting, man. Ain't gonna be no peace, bruh. You feel what I'm saying? Ain't gonna be no peace. So, yeah, I'm I I mean, I've I've been talking to a couple of people, and and we gonna get iron for. But I mean, this is when everybody should get out. Everybody should stand up. And I'm gonna tell you something, it's something about that east and that west coast, man. When you run them people wrong over there, y'all didn't see today? They was out there today. The stay-at-home order, they ain't having it. They out there by the thousands, down south. Man, they ain't beat y'all for four hundred sixty-three years. Y'all scared to come out there, I mean. But you'll go to the club. You you ain't gonna raise no hell, but you'll go to the club.
Dexter Evans says, we only live once. People have to do what they can do to help others. Some speak on and don't do others do what they say they are going to do. He's one of those, and the community needs his voice day after day. He's talking about uh the five stars.
The only problem I got with it, Dexter, is that a lot of days, man, I'm in the battle by myself. I'm in the battle with two, three other people, man. And Houston has a plethora of activists, advocates. You know, but they don't, they don't get on. I mean, some something like this, you know, this issue here, the NAACP should be involved. Black Lives Matter should be involved. The local politicians should be involved. But ain't nobody got time to stand up for the regular person. You see what I'm saying? I don't mind down for my community. But some days, remember, I go to school. I'm just starting four classes tomorrow. So, I mean, that that's priority. So it's gonna be some things that I'm gonna have to miss, but who's gonna pick up the mantle? Man, I'm, and I don't care if nobody get mad. Only people like to take credit for what go on in the school district. You a damn liar cuz I I buy myself ninety-eight percent of the time. Ninety-eight percent of the time, and that's a damn shame when you battling a billion-dollar bully.
Yeah, so I mean, I I agree with you. Um, there should be more people um out there to help you. You know, um but in regards to Yaya, I mean, it just, cuz you know, uh uh Gary was telling me about it last night. We're actually trying to see, try and see if she would come on. I don't know what happened with that, but it's appalling to me, you know. I just, I I'm like, did her probation officer see the same video we saw? Were we looking at the same video? I didn't see her being
He he's not gonna separate her from one child. She has three. So what happens to her three kids?
And for what? What what point are you trying to make with that? And like, what's the point of you, I mean, I'm thinking in terms of the probation officer, what what point are you trying to make with that? This lady brought her hu- her child home that night. Where she could've been, you know, uh uh seeking the authorities on a whole different level because her child was missing a probably sex profit. She did everything she's supposed to do. I don't, this is, this is crazy to me. So I think people really need to give, like I said, you know, put down what you're doing for a minute. And if it comes to her getting in trouble to that degree, or any degree, I think people should really go turn up. And let that probation officer know, we need to go after people who are really doing something. And somebody made a good comment in there saying, well, who was her representative? You know, who represents her district, the district she lives in? What are they gonna do about it? If they, you know, when they get wind of this, are they gonna say, hey, wait a minute? You need to go after some real criminals? This is a mother who did what you're supposed to do, leave her alone?
If they went after the real criminal, they probably had to banner ram they front door on their campaign off.
Yeah, but I mean, her eat up, that's the, uh, cuz see, those are the things, uh, those type of things are things done, like holding the pro- the uh probation officer accountable. Oh, you think it's cool to do that to mothers? Well, we pay your salary. We're taxpayers. We pay your salary, and we don't like what you're doing to her. So we need you to answer as to why you think it's a good idea to haul her and have her look at twenty years for protecting her baby. And then you need to knock on the doors of her politician who represents the district and say, hey, did you know that was gonna happen to her? By the way, did you see the video of this other lady who was trying to snatch her child? Where is her probation officer? Is she now gonna be portrayed as the victim? And it needs to go up from there. Everybody needs to be held accountable who was allowed. She's like, Yaya shouldn't even make it to a courthouse. The buck should stop before that because a probation officer needs to answer for why you are targeting her. Why you trying to make a claim for yourself? Cuz it went viral? You wanna be the one to appease the people who says that she was wrong? Well, he wasn't wrong, she was wrong. Why, what what's your angle?
Well, I I got an inbox. Body cams, are they useful? Or are they just used to do us in? Body cams on police officers. I'm gonna let y'all start cuz I got a whole different viewpoint on it.
All right, well, let me start this one. Body cams are very, very useful because it's actually, you know, showing what is going on. But what good is a body cam if the officer has control of when it starts and when it stops? That's the problem. And they have systems out there to where they kick up their body cams, the officer has no control, and it runs on a loop on a continual basis. That's why you're always seeing a video, the most crucial point, it stopped. And you're like, well, what happened? And all you see is the officer's perspective of what had happened, so I think they work. It's just that they shouldn't be in the hands and in the control of the officers who are manning them.
Demetrius?
Um, body cams obviously are very necessary, but it's tricky because, you know, officers can um can manipulate the camera. We've seen plenty of times where they turn them off, or they try to turn them off, and they thought they were off. And they say things out like, you know, the other camera is off. Uh, and then they go about doing and saying different things, and so I think they're effective, but I think it's only effective if they can't control them. I think once they put them off at the time, they can use to the time they get back to the office, I think they should stay on it. They should have no control over that. So that's how they will work, but believe it or not, there's a lot of politicians who don't like body cams. Like Kamala Harris, who won them up until she got called to the carpet. She fought um the system as far as body cams are concerned. I think they're necessary.
Body cams in the city of Houston. They fought like hell to get them. But they're not using them the right way. You have two innocent white people that were murdered in no-knock raid. By disgraced Houston police, police department officer Gerald Gores and his hit squad. Seventeen officers on the scene, and nobody had their body cam on. Nobody, which we all know, that's a lie. That's a flat-out lie. Now, the thing is, if the body cam weren't on, I know the cams in the car was.
Yeah, and 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 what about the cam in the city?
Exactly. So the only time I see them in my city really show footage from body cams, if it's open and shut, and it shines a light on the criminal the wrong way. But when it come to a cop, they got every reason in the world not to release that footage. Oh, well, we have to look into it, and and I told one of them last week, I say, say, man, I remember a cop was in a chase and something happened, and that dog was gonna charge that boy. Thirty minutes after that happened, you had the body cam footage on the TV. So you telling me it take all this time on some of these cases that we got going on? I think that body cams, if used the right way, it is a great thing. But I just like the fact that we got our own body cams now. We got our cell phones. Them cell phones, regardless of what people think, have saved a lot of people. The footage from them cell phones that we have been able to see across this country has exonerated a lot of people. So, you know, I like body cams. I don't think they're being used right. But keep your cell phone out when them people pull up cuz you never know when they gonna give you that smoke.
And and I always remember, there there there's a city cam that's usually everywhere, everywhere. So, you know, if if you get stopped by a cop and you're not sure if he's, he got his body cam on, look around and see what camera is posting, cuz I mean, Big Brother's watching everywhere. And and it's it's ridiculous to me when you, when you see uh certain people, you go into a government building, or you go somewhere, and they say, oh, you can't, you know, photo here, you can't photo here, but there's cameras all over the damn city. And they don't have a problem with that, but they have a problem with you videotaping.
Well, we gonna close with this. Al Jackson, I like this. He said, I'd love to hear a memorable childhood story from each of you. So, Demetrius, you get to go first. It's your final words. Let it rip.
You want a good one or a bad one? Ah, I'm not, uh, a good one, and I have quite a few good ones. Um, one of them, I remember my father um would come uh for a visitation. And uh one particular time, my dad always wore suit, uh being in the Nation of Islam, he always wore suits. He was gonna take us um skating, roller skating from our house to the beach. We didn't live that far uh from the beach, but we roller skated from my house to the beach, and he did that with his vest on, from his suit, his pants, and uh, you know, dress shirt, and we skated all around the beach, ate and everything, you know, as kids and uh, so to me, that was a good time because my father was like, you know, don't let the suit fool you. You know, I'm still gonna, you know, show up for my kids, and we're gonna have a good time, and that 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 was one of many. Now, that was when he threw us in the swimming pool and said, uh, this is your swimming lesson.
Donovan?
One of the, one of the best uh childhood memories that I have is uh my mom would send me home, me and my brother home. You hear me?
Yeah.
One of the best memories I had is that my uh mother would send me and my brother home to Louisiana for the summer. And and we would always go, you know, you know, the grandkids are home, everybody's home, and you know, grandma reaches into that thing, and she would give us a a food stamp or a dollar, and we would get, and it was ten cents for a frozen cup. It was ten cents for a frozen cup, and we would walk down the street cuz there's always somebody in the neighborhood either selling frozen cups or pecan candy. And then we, and then we would come back home, and that's, I remember, that is when Off the Wall Broke, and all my girl cousins got in their little troop thing and would do a dance. You know, it was just those little memories like that. Those little things to me were always priceless, you know, so.
I think my story is one that kind of defines me. I've told it a thousand times, and people, they get it wrong a lot. Um, it's about having initiative. That's what was told to me to have some initiative. You know, every morning, I ride the city bus to school. And um every morning, the bus driver would stop at the cleaners, and that would make all of us on the bus late for first period. Well, not necessarily late because I had a ritual when I got to school that I had to sit on the front porch. I had to put the crinkles in my girlfriend's house. That I had to sit on the front porch, I had to put the crinkles in my girlfriend's house. I had to make sure I, she had the crinkles exactly like I wanted, so she had the crinkling iron. I'm sitting there putting the crinkles, then I had to walk on the first period and then I had to go to first period, which was golf. And my health teacher was a female coach, Ms. Lynch, who realistically thought. That I was in a cult, that I was the devil. Because I used to talk about breaking people's legs on the football field, I wanted to inflict pain, that's all I ever wanted to do. So, the thing is, is people get the story wrong. So I'm late that morning, as usual. So she go down to the football coach and she snitch on me. He called me in office after first period, I'm gonna give you a pass to your second period, we need to talk. I say, what's up? He say, man, you've been late for this woman class thirty-nine times this semester. He say, you got one more time to be late, I'm gonna kick you off the team. Now, you gotta remember, we wanna state championship, so we in the middle of a run. So I'm like, I can't be late no more, what I'm gonna do, man, I say, coach, man, the man stop at the cleaners, man, every morning. He say, take some initiative. Do what you gotta do. Okay. The next morning, we at the bus stop. And everybody at the bus stop, man, what you gonna do? Cause the word done got around. Man, if this man stopped his bus, I'm gonna take this mother. And I'm getting to school on time, man. Like clockwork, we get on the bus and I ain't never drove nothing. Except for a car at Astroworld. An amusement park with, you know, with the little cars, that's all I ever drove, so I watched him. When he stopped at the cleaners, he turned the knob and it said. And the bus stayed still, so when he got off and he went to cleaners, I jumped in the seat. I turned the knob and said, and I took off. I didn't have but one turn to make by TSU. I knew I had to turn wide, cause I had been watching it. I turned wide, I parked the bus right there by the school, by the cutie hole. I got off the thing, got to the porch, put the crinkles in Tiff's house. Made it to first period before everybody else and the woman looking at me like. Damn, you on time? I said, I took some initiative. So after class, coach come get me. Coach come get me. He say, man, I'm gonna give you a pass to second period. Say, man, they told me you stole a bus this morning. I say, that's your fault. He say, how that's my fault, you told me to take some initiative and that's exactly what I did. And I took some initiative. That man looked at me, he say. You mentally ill. I'm mentally ill, but I ain't taught it for first period. Now, you know I couldn't ride the bus no more. So that mean I had to get up a couple of hours early and just walk all the way to school. But, I mean, that taught me initiative from, uh, throughout my life, that no matter what I needed to do. One, I always needed to be on time. I need to be on time, two, you do whatever you gotta do to accomplish the goal. That's how, that's how I felt, so, um. I got a million different stories, I could have y'all crying laughing forever, but. Uh, tomorrow is a holiday. And we'll figure it out, there we go, y'all, you know? But I wanna thank y'all for tuning in. And, and Eric will say I'm off the chain. It's your initiative in Houston that makes you support, that makes us support your work. I just do whatever I gotta do to accomplish the goal. And I like being around these two, cause I'm pretty sure they would do the same thing. So when I die, y'all, make sure, cause somebody gonna bring it up at the funeral. Tell the story the right way. That's what it was, I own that. I do a video every year for my old high school. And last year we did the video and, and, and I said, I'm still Monroe. I'm about to steal me a bus in the middle of the song. And in the back, you can see the yellow school bus passing by, cause I'm legendary for that. You feel what I'm saying? I'm legendary for that, so. I wanna, I wanna thank all of y'all, man, you, you give me energy when I don't have energy. You make me, you make me wanna go. And I wanna thank my co-hosts who took a chance on a crazy man and. And now we got the hottest show in social media history, my co-host Donovan Siddique. Demetrius K. And I am the five-star general. Until tomorrow. We'll see.